of Los Angeles need to know and many of them don't know because the rules are constantly changing. But the seminar in the Westlake District aims to educate them about tenants' rights.
Then what are my rights? Let's talk about the rights of the homeowner.
Tenant advocates give the information to Spanish-speaking apartment renters gathered at Hoover Elementary School.
I think it's important information to share for others.
Candida Rodriguez was totally unaware of recent changes to the city's Cash for Keys program. It allows landlords to pay tenants to move out. The program only applies to rent-controlled housing, and what many tenants don't know is that landlords must pay between $8,000 and $20,000 for relocation. The $20,000 maximum buyout is usually reserved for low-income families with kids.
There's still some landlords who are not complying with the law and are offering very, very low, you know, $2,000, $3,000 when maybe the family qualified for $20,000.
This provision kicked in in early 2017 with the help of L.A. City Councilman Gil Sadio, and low-wage tenants want more.
I know people now they have the rent too high.
The good news is if you live in units built before 1979, your rent can only increase between 3% and 10% a year tops. Anything more than that is usually against the law. Sadio's office is working to expand this low rate to more people and buildings.
There's currently a state law that prohibits the city of Los Angeles from expanding rent control. A lot of tenants don't know that, so when they call our office, they're very upset and very frustrated that we can't do anything beyond the current RSO or rent control. We want to let them know that we're on their side.
You also have rights. If you feel you're being gypped by an unscrupulous landlord, call Councilman Sadio's office at 213-473-7001. Staffers say if their office can't help you, they'll refer you to someone who can. I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Under the Cash for Keys program, tenants also have 30 days to back out of the agreement from the day of signing. Landlords also have to register Cash for Keys agreements with the city. On the second floor of City Hall is a diner that's helping at-risk youth improve their lives. It's also the site of the city's latest computer giveaway for young people who could really use the technology. Gil Reyes shows us.
I don't know, they just surprised us out of nowhere, and I think it's very awesome.
Dulce Gonzalez, a staffer at City Hall's Homeboy Diner, is one of five diner workers happy to receive free computers to take home. This all started with a conversation Gonzalez had with a customer.
And I just told them how hard it was for me to like do my homework because they didn't have access to internet and I had to go back and forth to Homeboys to do classwork and everything because everything now is online.
Someone overheard the conversation and hooked Gonzalez up with the city's OurCycle L.A. program. OurCycle takes old city department office computers and refurbishes them for people in need, the effort led by Council President Herb Wesson, the city's Information Technology Agency, and other partners.
We then partnered to get free internet, and now we're going to be able to give people free internet till 2021. And up to this point, we've given away thousands. Three thousand. We've given over 3,000 of these revamped refurbished computers to people who need it.
Homeboy Diner offers jobs, training, and support for young people cycling out of gangs. Daniel Diaz is a dad and college student working towards a brighter future.
I don't have a computer at home and it's just, I just appreciate the opportunity and individuals that participate in this program too.
From the latest OurCycle giveaway at City Hall's Homeboy Diner, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The city hired a nonprofit human IT to refurbish the PCs with the latest technology. While refurbishing old computers is just one way the city is giving back to the environment, another is a new recycling program that's all about making sure nothing goes to waste. Rasha Goel has more.
The day started off at the Athens Services Material Recovery Facility in Sun Valley, where tons of waste is being recycled and won't end up at a landfill.
Last year, we recovered and diverted over 200,000 tons of material from going to landfills and putting it back in the marketplace, and our goal is that by 2020, we double that number in collaboration with the city of Los Angeles.
The collaboration entails a new recycling and waste collection program called Recicla. Angelenos can do their part to reduce waste in businesses, schools, and restaurants.
It's a way in which through minimal effort, separating recyclables from residual trash is one simple way in which everyone can participate.
High-tech facilities such as this one are changing the waste industry. This $50 million recycling facility is helping clean up the environment and pollution communities have suffered from for years.
Landfilling is harmful to the environment. It destroys our natural resources.
Facilities such as this one help reduce the city's dependence on landfills. Now, this is all part of the city's commitment to become the first city in the nation to achieve zero waste by the year 2025.
At the same time, Angelenos need to do their part. Here are some tips when it comes to recycling.
Make sure that your bottles are clean primarily, and the clear plastics in particular, but also detergent bottles, for example. Containers that are like mixed materials, those tend to be not very recyclable, so try to avoid those, as well as materials that are dirty. Other things that you can recycle is cardboard and paper, of course. You have to also recycle, you should recycle your canned aluminum cans, anything that's metal, but if it's that aluminum foil, it's too thin and that actually does not recycle very well.
For more information on the program, you can visit recicla.com. In Sun Valley, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Other events celebrating America Recycles Day included reducing food waste demonstrations at local restaurants and classroom events teaching kids about recycling. Well, small efforts can certainly make a big impact. Rasha Goel has more on how residents came together to help clean up one of the city's precious treasures.
Bags quickly piled up as volunteers gathered to support the 34th Annual L.A. River Cleanup. Volunteers helped beautify the L.A. River Greenway Trail starting at Laurel Grove Avenue in Studio City.
This is a much-used bike path and running path, and it has lots of debris and trash on both sides of the river. So we're out here today with 200 volunteers to pick up trash, remove graffiti, remove any debris on both the city side and the county side because the river is operated by both sides.
The Greater San Fernando Valley Chamber of Commerce, who led the effort, has been leading cleanup efforts for over 30 years. This year, the focus was the L.A. River.
It's really fun, and you get to meet new people.
Volunteers included kids from schools and community organizations.
It's very dirty, but hopefully we can clean it up soon.
It's good to help the community because when you're helping the community, you're helping lots of people, and you're helping animals because you don't want any animals to eat trash, and if they do, they could get really sick, and you need animals to be in the world.
Small kids making a large impact for all of us. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
The cleanup was also supported by Councilmember Paul Krikorian's office. While the Asian-American faith-based community is honoring those who improve the quality of life in their neighborhoods, they team up with the L.A. Human Relations Commission for this awards event. Anna Marcos has more.
Asian-Americans, faith leaders, and the city's Human Relations Commission got together to hand out these community awards. The event shone a spotlight on Asian-Americans making a difference in their faith communities.
And this is the first time that they've had a non-Anglo Asian-American as the moderator for the Presbyterian Church in America, and I think that's breaking barriers, and that's what they wanted to honor me for.
Yeah, I'm getting an award this evening for the work I did when I was lead pastor at Evergreen Baptist Church of Los Angeles to actually make it a welcoming space for Asian-American Christians who identify as LGBTQ.
The awards were the culmination of a three-day summit that touched on faith, race, and economic equality, and much more in the Asian community.
We were talking about the issue of race and how that really affects people on all levels, the quality of their education, the type of housing that they receive, and how they're being treated in different aspects of our society.
So this summit is to really equip leaders in our community, particularly with a focus on the Asian community, in building bridges across different sectors.
Economically, I think a lot of people are suffering. We have housing issues, we have healthcare issues, we have homelessness.
In this room at least, churches, government, and people all finding a way to work together to find solutions and honor those who have in a community that often doesn't get a lot of attention. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The Human Relations Commission works on issues affecting interracial relations, human rights, equality, homelessness, immigration, battered women, housing, and more. Well, think it's sci-fi? Well, think again. Real technology on land and in the air will drastically change mobility as we know it. Gil Reyes shows us what experts have in store from La Crete's Innovation Campus.
Remember the Jetsons? The cartoon family from the future got around in flying cars, an innovation that may not be too far away.
People will be coming to the airport in flying vehicles and not airplanes, in their own sort of flying taxis in the not-too-distant future, so within 10 years for sure.
Jean Resant makes the fascinating prediction which could drastically reduce vehicle traffic around traffic-plagued LAX, Resant is chairman of the New Cities Foundation, a global nonprofit that researches how emerging technologies could impact cities. He and other experts are in downtown for an event called L.A. Commotion.
Bringing people here together to look at how are we going to move, how are we going to connect, whether it's goods, whether it's people, what are the cutting-edge technologies, and L.A. has always been brave about embracing those, and how can we work with companies to really suit them to improve the quality of life for all of us.
Mayor Eric Garcetti takes a look at our Kimoto SRKs. These two-seater electric vehicles take up little space, can travel up to 80 miles an hour, and have surprisingly large storage space. They're also called FUVs, the "F" standing for fun. Expect them on the market in 2018. But who needs drivers? Experts say totally autonomous vehicles could be shuttling Angelenos to and from work in a few years. The city's Information Technology Agency wants to be ready.
So part of it is pulling data out of the systems, understanding where people are getting picked up and dropped off, whether Uber or Lyft rides, being able to understand how people are using curb space differently.
Fewer traditional cars on the road could reduce pollution and free up space for more housing and parks. So it's time to embrace the not-so-distant future, the time to get ready is now. From La Crete's Innovation Campus in downtown's Arts District, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
By the way, the sticker price for one of those SRKs is around $12,000. Well, Angelenos pitched in for a day to run, walk, and raise money to help those who are homeless. Anna Marcos takes us to the Homewalk event through city streets, a joint effort between the city and the United Way of Greater Los Angeles.
Plenty of colorful characters around to kick off the 11th Annual Homewalk in downtown L.A. Runners and walkers of all shapes and sizes burst out of the starting line as the five-kilometer run-and-walk event hit the road, some of them quite noisy. Others just curious and friendly, families, groups, people with baby buggies, people and their dogs, and kids, lots of kids. All hoping it for a good cause, ending homelessness in L.A.
Since we work and live in USC, this is an important cause for us. We see homeless every day.
It was a great cause to be able to go through L.A., to see all of it, and also go past some of the people that are impacted by this cause.
Some advocate for the homeless not just on this day, but every day, like this guy.
I once was homeless myself, me and my son. You know, I wasn't always homeless. I had a job. I worked nine-to-five like everybody else. The company I worked for went out of business, and I found myself homeless.
Apparently, there were teams all working to raise money for their run. Team Garcetti raised a hefty $10,000, but SoCal Gas pulled out all the stops, raising a whopping $108,000.
You can say yes to ending homelessness in Los Angeles. Can you say yes? One, two, three, yeah!
Keep on running, keep on walking.
Yep, we think pretty much everyone was saying yes at this Homewalk event. Angelenos have also been saying yes over the past year, as they voted in Prop HHH and Measure H, two laws that will tax L.A. voters to help pay for building homeless housing.
You opened your hearts, you opened your wallets, and you said in no uncertain terms that we will end homelessness in Los Angeles.
But it wasn't all sweat and good deeds. Everyone who crossed the finish line got a medal, as these happy faces show, and then it was time to let loose at all the fun events. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The Homewalk event raised more than $1 million in one day for homeless housing. While the city welcomes another permanent housing complex for homeless veterans, Bike Share comes to Griffith Park, and South L.A. residents celebrate a new park in their neighborhood. All these stories in City B. Mayor Eric Garcetti joined other city and county officials at the grand opening of Silver Star Apartments, a permanent supportive housing complex for homeless veterans. The 49-unit development is the first zero-net-energy, multifamily, affordable housing project in L.A. This affordable development is also the first permitted system for indoor gray water reuse in L.A. and is estimated to save over half a million gallons of water per year. The Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles has committed $10.5 million in housing assistance payments over the next 15 years. The City of Los Angeles Department of Rec and Parks is working with OFO, a bike-share company, to give visitors to Griffith Park a new, easy, and fun way of getting around. With thousands of visitors coming to Griffith Park daily, officials say Bike Share is convenient, affordable, and hassle-free. Riders simply download the OFO mobile app and scan a QR code on the license plate to unlock a bike. Once you download the app, a map in the app shows the location of nearby bikes. When the trip is over, riders can park anywhere in compliance with local laws. The trip costs $1 per hour. The Department of Rec and Parks, along with Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson, celebrated the grand opening of Vermont Miracle Park. The property, located in the South Los Angeles region, has been transformed into a new green space developed through a community-led plan. Amenities include bright-colored playground, adult fitness equipment, drought-tolerant landscaping, and sustainable design elements. Vermont Miracle Park is number 39 of the city's 50 Parks Initiative program designed to address park disparity across the city. The park will provide new recreational opportunities for youth and their families in a community that lacks green space. Well, who doesn't want to be well-groomed? Well, thanks to a program started by a young girl and the city, homeless individuals recently had the chance to enjoy some pampering. Rasha Goel has more.
At the age of 10, Chloe Thompson is the CEO of her nonprofit Chloe Cares. Her mission: to support the homeless community and motivate other kids to be the change in their community. And she recently partnered with the city's Department of Recreation and Parks to bring free grooming services to those in need.
We're here at Gladys Park in Skid Row, and we have cuts in the park. And this was actually an idea of this young lady right here.
I just thought it would be great to give people who need haircuts to have haircuts, and also gifts to have them take showers, and it's just what I really wanted for them to have.
Services included free haircuts, showers, shaves, resource booths, giveaways, and much more.
They're good, they're really good, they know what they're doing.
With homelessness in the park becoming an issue, the Department of Recreation and Parks felt it was necessary to provide basic hygiene services to help improve public safety.
They're taking their hard-earned money, and they showing us love as well as we showing them love, you know what I'm saying? It's a beautiful thing.
For many here, a beautiful gift created by a young humanitarian mind. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Chloe Cares was started by Chloe Thompson in 2015. Well, a Disney classic tells the tale as old as time. Kick off the holiday season by hitting the ice rink, or enjoy a community parade in Echo Park. All this in this week's Things to Do. Casa 0101 Theater and TNH Productions in association with L.A. Councilmember Gil Sadio are proud to present Disney's Beauty and the Beast. This classic story follows Belle, a young woman in a provincial town, and the beast, who is really a young prince trapped in a spell placed by an enchantress. If the beast can learn to love and be loved, the curse will end, and he will be transformed to his former self. But time is running out. If the beast does not learn his lesson soon, he and his household will be doomed for all eternity. The play starts December 8th and runs until January 21st at Casa 0101 Theater located at 2102 East First Street. For more, visit casao101.org. You got to have some fun on the ice this winter season, so strap on your skates or rent some, and hit the Pershing Square Ice Rink. The 7,200-square-foot rink will be open through January 15th, and more than 50,000 people are expected to strap on the blades during the two-month run. Lots of events are planned on the ice that'll sure to keep the whole family entertained. For a list of events, go to holidayicrinkdowntownlacom. It's the season of parades, and Echo Park is hosting its annual community parade along Sunset Boulevard between Viv Scully Avenue to Park Avenue. Thousands of residents from Echo Park and surrounding neighborhoods sit on the sidelines to watch the 50 more parade entries, including Santa, celebrate the holiday season. This year's parade theme is Golden Memories of Echo Park, and it takes place Saturday, December 9th from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. For more, visit echo park community parade dot com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
And file those without objection, that'll be the order, thank you. Next items, please.
Items three through thirty-three are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items ten, twenty-nine, and thirty-three have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Great, then those items are before us. Councilmember Bonner?
Could we just hold three on the desk for a bit? I need to get a question answered from city attorney.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold three on the desk, and we'll take up the remaining items. Mr. Rue?
Five forthwith.
I'm sorry?
Number five, forthwith.
Okay, after we vote on it, we'll go ahead and do that. And colleagues, anything else? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move five forthwith per councilmember Rue's request, without objection, that'll be the order. Next items, please.
Items thirty-four through fifty-five are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Mr. Kreutz.
I'd like to ask that fifty-four be called special.
Okay, fifty-four.
And, Mr. President, there are cards on items thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-four.
And we're also going to go ahead and hold item forty-three, forty-four, forty-six, and forty-eight on the desk for CD one, so we can open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved, thank you very much. And we have a request for items ten and twenty-nine to be sent forthwith by the city attorney, so we'll go ahead and honor that request without objection, that'll be the order. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Items fifty-six through sixty are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I'd like to ask Mr. Kocorian what he'd like to do with those items.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Items fifty-six through sixty are all settlements that have been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval. They're all routine matters that could be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Seeing no questions or concerns, I'd like to take those items individually. So we'll go ahead and open the roll on item fifty-six.
And for the, on item fifty-six, in the case entitled Ariana Santiago, there is a recommendation to expend up to one hundred and fifty thousand in settlement.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Okay, item fifty-seven?
In the case entitled Los Angeles Community College District versus County of Los Angeles at All, there is a recommendation to expend one million four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in settlement.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Fifty-eight?
In the case entitled Colin Marshall versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in settlement.
Very well, go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item?
Item fifty-nine, in the case entitled Denise Gaberman versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to one hundred and eighty thousand dollars in settlement.
Very well, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And next item, please.
And lastly, item sixty, in the case entitled Aiden Howard versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in settlement.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on that last item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, two noes.
Okay, thank you very much. We can go ahead and take the ordinances up again. We're holding item three, but we can go ahead and take four through seven. Three's good? Okay, we'll go ahead and take three through seven. So we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items.
Three through seven.
Oh, first we're gonna, it's a reconsideration, so we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration.
Four through seven.
Four through seven.
Four through seven. Three through seven.
Reconsideration?
Yes.
Well, four through seven for reconsideration.
Yeah.
You're correct.
Okay, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, thank you very much. Now the items three through seven are once again before us. So we'll open the roll on those items.
Three through seven.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. And we'll go ahead and take John Walsh at this time. I believe John Walsh is a standing agenda item on the city council.
Mr. Kocorian? Okay.
Tell me the items I signed up for. Nobody knows what they're doing here. Give me the items I signed up for.
Yeah, Mr. Walsh, you signed up for number one, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-nine, fifty-one, and general public comment.
Okay, item one, this is building and safety, you do a good job there. When you do a good job, I'm the first to admit it. I'm not one of those white guys who say, "You're all a bunch of crooks! Let's get rid of all the minorities!" That's not me. Thirty-four, this is Board of Commissioners. Ms. Claire Cielo Castro. Fine, you know, you put a person in here a few years ago, a couple of years ago, and you had to remove them because they had a criminal record against children. Number thirty-five, this is the speed limit revisions. I hope these are revisions that slow the speed down, however, there's no mention here of whether the revision is to speed up or to slow down. My guess is that it's speeding up. If I'm wrong, you can correct me. Number thirty-six, this is personnel ordinances. No problem there. Number thirty-nine, to provide additional emergency alert response services on a citywide basis. This company, I'm not absolutely certain that this is the best company to handle this, but we need, desperately need better emergency communications in this city. Number forty-one, this is tax-exempt revenue bonds for senior veteran apartments. As long as this is done according to law, we're one hundred percent in favor of it. As you know, I don't squeeze every damn second out of you. When I finish talking, you can have your forty, your forty-six seconds. Now I have to get into general public comment. As you know, the editor of The Times was kicked out, there's a new editor, and the difference is night and day. I hope you read the story on the front page, it should be here. You are, your crime is skyrocketing in the city and county of Los Angeles. Violent crime skyrocketing. If you Google, you can read the entire report that was issued. And the reason for that is simple. The city is out of control, the mayor is running for president or God knows what, he's never in the city, he's out one hundred and fifty days a year. So what we need now in the city is a better, we need more politics. We need more, we have to get rid of the mayor, and we'll get rid of him next time he runs for office. We'll beat him.
Okay, colleagues, we'll go ahead and vote on items thirty-four through thirty-seven, Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Peter Hoben on item thirty-eight?
On item thirty-eight?
Is Peter here? Okay, there you are, sir. Come on up.
Good morning, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak before you this morning. My name is Peter Hoben, I work in bike sharing, my name, I work for a company called Bicycle Transit Systems, and we are the operators of Metro Bike Share. We also operate systems in...
You know what, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna go ahead and restart your clock in a minute. We have an amending motion on it, I don't know if you've seen that yet, so, city attorney, I'm gonna ask you to go ahead and read that in.
Yes, I'll just read it out. So there's an amending motion to change item thirty-eight to, quote, "authorize the Los Angeles Department of Transportation to develop and execute agreements for dockless bike-share programs in Council Districts four and fifteen, including the Harbor District, on an interim basis until the council authorizes a pilot program, regulatory framework, and permit process through Council File seventeen-one-one-two-five." So please take that into account if you want to comment on that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start your clock. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Peter Hoben, I'm from Bicycle Transit Systems. We work for Metro Bike Share in operating the system here in Los Angeles, also in Philadelphia, Las Vegas, and Oklahoma City. I've been working in bike share since 2010, and I'm very interested in all the developments that happen in bike share, both in this city and around the world. Bike sharing has been held historically to very high safety standards. We work very closely with our clients at cities and regional organizations to ensure that we provide equitable services and ensure that the roadways and the public right-of-way are safe for all users, not just bike, pedestrian, but also drivers. We are interested in the development of this dockless bike sharing and all bike sharing in LA. We do have concerns, and we are interested in the way that the City of Los Angeles will be dealing with some of the safety, maintenance, and accessibility issues that dockless bike share has brought to other systems, particularly theft, vandalism, bike abandonment, and pollution, which we've seen in very high quantities in other systems, both in the U.S. and around the world. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, Mr. President. As Chair of the committee, I'd actually like the amending motion to go to Transportation Committee. Mr. Rue has a, Mr. Rue, you have a motion on this already that's scheduled for Transportation Committee, we're gonna be hearing it next week, next Wednesday, and there's, there are both liability and regulatory concerns about allowing dockless bike share to start happening absent our regulations. We have significant issues with managing the public right-of-way, making sure that we have ADA access, managing access to bus stops, and DOT is, has a full policy that they're gonna be bringing forward to committee next week, so I'd ask that we approve the pilot item in the harbor today and take up the overall policy next week. The difference between CD fifteen's pilot is it's already happening, and they're sort of geographically discreet. If we open up a pilot in another council district absent the regulatory framework, it's automatically gonna bleed into CD thirteen, it's gonna bleed into other adjoining districts, and other districts are very eager to have this as well, but we just want to have the regulatory framework in place, which, as I said, we'll be doing next Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. You know, this is an issue that we've been discussing with the City of, the Department of Transportation, although it's the city attorney's office, and while I share your concerns, and I'm very cognizant of those concerns, at the same time, we could have the city attorney come up and explain some of the issues surrounding it, but when we have the expansion of, or when we have the pilot project in both CD four or CD fifteen, it's not, at least in CD four, we're not gonna implement it immediately. We are going to be looking at it, and we want the opportunity, while we're working with the other motion in your committee, but this is something, I don't feel comfortable just sending just the amendment. I mean, if we want to send the whole item back to committee, I don't mind that, but just porcing out this portion of it, I do have a little bit of concern, because this is something at the advice of the city attorney and Department of Transportation that we've been working through, and this was the best option for us.
I'm not sure that's the advice of the city attorney, that's...
So this is what, colleagues, this is what I'm gonna do on this, I'm gonna hold this on the desk for a moment, and then let's go ahead and go to the next, next item. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and reconsider a number of items that are coming in with amendments, and those were items forty-three, forty-four, forty-six, and forty-eight. And, I'm sorry, and item fifty.
Oh, hold on.
So those were items forty-three, forty-four, forty-six, forty-eight, and fifty. So we'll open the roll for reconsideration on those items. Okay, so those items are before us for reconsideration, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, and then, I believe that those were submitted, but we're waiting for them to be circulated, is that correct, Madam Chair, or Madam Clerk?
I'm not at this time.
Okay, so we'll hold those on the desk and come back to them as well. Let's go ahead and take general public comment now. Faith Myra, followed by Bobby Willis, followed by Saba, and Daniel Jones. Come on up. So if all of you want to start making your way up, does anybody else here for general public comment? Those are all the general public comment cards we have in?
I signed up for fifty-four for general public comment.
Okay, so you have, if you want to go ahead and take fifty-four now, and then general public comment, that's fine.
Okay.
So you have one minute on each.
I'd rather do fifty-four when it's being heard, is that okay?
Well, I'm about to take it right after general public comment, anyway.
Okay, all right, then I'll go for it. So my name is Faith Myra, and I am a resident in Maravista.
And we have, oh, I'm sorry, okay, your clock hadn't started, I wanted to make sure they were starting it. Also, if there are no other general public comment cards, we're gonna go ahead and close general public comment for the ones that we've already have submitted and that are in. So general public comment, unless you already had your card in, those names have been called. And, go ahead, I'm sorry, we'll start your clock again.
So my name is Faith Myra, and I am a resident in Maravista in CD eleven. I'm a volunteer with Protect Playa Now and with Food and Water Watch. Me and my partner woke up Wednesday night to the gas. We spent a lot of time worrying that it was our own apartment, then worrying that it was our overall building, and then finding our other neighbors out on the street in the middle of the night, wondering why the whole street smelled of gas. My partner got a rash and nausea. My neighbors and my friends were reporting headaches, rashes, and nausea. These are the same symptoms that are still being felt by the residents in North San Fernando Valley after the Eliso Canyon blowout back in 2015. These are the same symptoms that residents in Eight Mile, Alabama are feeling ten years after a Mercaptin spill in their hometown. I think this is a very serious issue. I am in support of this motion. I quite frankly don't think it goes far enough, but I'm in support.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, did you, you still had a minute on the general public comment, did you wish to have a general public comment, not related to that item? No? Okay. Great, thank you very much.
You don't have to get up if you don't have to. No, I can't. It's all right. Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Saba Ilamasal. I'm from Ethiopia. I came in this country to go to school. While I was studying in this country, my country, my tribe, I'm an Amhara, from Ethiopia, my tribe was murdered by the American money, by the British money, by Italian money. The manifesto of the TPLF, which is ruling, was to kill Amharas and to destroy Orthodox, you see? Twenty-seven years I live in this...
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, that, that can...
The city of Los Angeles did nothing for refugees.
Thank you very much. That concludes your, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Oh, very much.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much. So our next speaker, Bobby Willis?
So who should I talk to regarding...
Thank you, the sergeant, the sergeants can talk to you in the back. Thank you very much.
Good morning, all city councilmen, to y'all, ladies, sir, God bless y'all this morning.
And if you could please try to speak in the microphone as well, thank you.
I said good morning to city councilmen, you all, God bless y'all this morning. My name is Bobby Willis, I am here on behalf, I'm not nowhere on the docket, but I had, I had, I had, I had three LA deputy, three LA deputy shells beat me while detained in handcuffs in the LA County Jail, two thousand and nine. My, 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 my case, we went to trial May of two thousand and thirteen. Because my attorneys, I didn't have no help, my attorney caused me Renee Kellmer, Felicia Mobley caused me to lose my case. When I couldn't get, I couldn't, I couldn't get no attorney to take my case, but when I did get Renee Kellmer, Renee Kellmer and Felicia Mobley, they caused me to lose my case. She had, Renee Kellmer, she's, when he, when he deputy jumped, D. Deputy jumped on me, they jumped on me from the seven inmates.
Thank you very much.
The seven inmates.
Thank you. Your, your time is up, but thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Daniel Jones, I oversee things with this council. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody involved with taking care of the airport issue, that's good. I would like to say thank you from the top of my heart to Rita Wild of KLOS and all the airtime that she had, she retired this week. A point of order, here's your own rule, the city council shall take no action on any item discussed during public comment. No action means you're not allowed to move, think, talk, or anything. It says "the" city council, not just a little bit of you. Take no action during city council meeting. My time, not yours. Not him talking like he is, he's taking in action. You're supposed to be bear witness to the testimony. Now, the tax cut, I'm gonna use your own justification to kill it. Every corporation that has a twenty percent tax rate is communist. Good luck with that.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. And Mr. Previn, I know you've got multiple cards as well, so we'll go ahead and take, take you up on all your items now. You've got items one, forty-three, forty-four, and general public comment. All the other ones were, that you filled out cards for were either items that were rescheduled or had already had public comment.
Thank you, sir, it's Eric Previn from CD two. Did you, did you wrap up the closed-session items already, or? Yeah, okay, I'll have to get that information later, I was interested. Thank you. Obviously, item thirty-six is a very big personnel item, which I think covers virtually every department of the city of Los Angeles.
I'm afraid we already voted on item thirty-six.
Oh, you did? Okay, that's, that's disappointing, because I know the CAO has been circulating now that we do not need judgment obligation bonds.
Again, we already took up that item, so I suggest we move on to items forty-three, forty-four, one...
I was speaking on the other, on forty-three and forty-four now, but the judgment obligation bond matter, we are avoiding the pitfall of having to borrow that money, is what I was told by the CAO.
Again, you're off-topic, and that's your fair and final warning, we've already told you again, so if you want to continue talking about the items, or we can go ahead and go into your one minute of general public comment. As you came up, I told you which items specifically were already voted on, already had public comment, and we're satisfied, so go ahead and...
Well, the grant at forty-three is for pedestrian bicycle safety, and, you know, is that fair fight? I mean, yeah, I think it's on the agenda, and I, you know, I think we have to do a lot in this space, as people know, all over America, in New York, Winnie Hu wrote an article about the work they've done on Queens Boulevard South that has reduced to zero in three years the number of road fatalities, which is just extraordinary. But the way we do it has been hard and difficult in the city of LA and the county of LA, and so there's gonna be some challenges going forward. And certainly the liability, I know Gaberman was on the agenda today, we're facing more and more of these bicycles, I know you saw a cycle of disrepair on SoCal Connected, and I know that it has caused us all to wonder what happened to Nazario Sauceda, who was running street services. And I think that the concern where I was earlier on the bonds is that, you know, the way we have avoided the excessive liability payouts and the bond for the moment is by having departments give back money, like Mr. Sauceda said bravely during the budget hearing, and so that is a...
Right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and start your one minute of general public comment.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate your patience. Today we wrote in City Watch an article about the Ethics Commission's audits. They have been obviously working under very difficult circumstances, because it has taken in excess of four years to complete an audit on a campaign for, for an esteemed, you know, Mr. Buscaino, Mr. Sadio, and Mr. O'Farrell, who I will just simply say has done the right thing, and so I applaud you for that, by returning the fifty-two fifty, plus the four thousand in penalties for the Masiborsky LLC matter and some others. But the Ethics Commission does not need more money, they need to frankly work harder. And we don't understand why, it feels almost like a laundromat up there, where it's taking so long that everybody who cared has sort of withered, and yet when a guy like Kelly Lordser, who vanquished, who you vanquished in your election, comes forward for the very same penalty as O'Farrell, he's lambasted, stuck on the website for weeks at a time, and humiliated, completely inappropriate conduct on the part of an Ethics Commission. So I don't know if it's time for Heather to say thank you for her service, but we do appreciate your...
Right, thank you very much, your time's up.
Council members, good morning. You won't see the story in the LA Times, but my new story on City Watch LA today is about a federal ruling that is going to adversely affect city council. A federal judge last week ruled that Mr. Spindler did not threaten city council president Herb Wesson in May of 2016. For the past two years, you have made public participation extra difficult, and as a result now, a federal court has ruled, no matter how reprehensible Mr. Spindler's words or drawings might be, but a federal judge, why is this not in the LA Times, ruled that Mr. Spindler did not threaten Mr. Wesson. The problem is now, his civil rights lawsuits against the city are gonna move forward, and how are you gonna make reparations on this? As odd as that seems, you need to pay attention.
Thank you very much. All right, so now that concludes, I believe, all the speaker cards on all the items and as well as general public comment.
We still have 54.
We have additional cards on 54. I wanted to take that up now, but I have a request now from CD5 to hold that a little longer. So we'll pause for a moment on that then, come back right back to it. But we do have espresso, a very special presentation today by Councilwoman Nuri Martinez. So the floor is yours.
Good morning, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I'm recognizing December, a Los Angeles-based organization that aims to dismantle the human trafficking and slavery around the world. Here with me is the founder of December, Blythe Hill. Please help me welcome her and congratulate her for being a champion in the fight against human trafficking. Blythe, like many of us, knew she felt passionate about this issue. Yet, she was at a loss in finding the right way to help. She thought to herself, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a social service representative, and I'm certainly not an expert in the issue. But she knew she had to do something to help the millions of people who often find or find themselves victims of human trafficking and slavery. Blythe recognized her skills in fashion, trend analysis, and blogging, and decided to take the first steps in what would become an international advocacy campaign. She started with a dress. Blythe decided to show her solidarity with human trafficking and slavery victims by wearing a dress every day in the month of December in 2009. In 2015, her friends moved by Blythe's statement, decided to join her, and wore their dresses every single day in the month of December. In 2013, December blossomed. December participants wore, vowed to wear a dress, and in the case of men, they wore a tie every single day in the month of December. Whether it's cold, raining, or snowing, every single day for 31 days, December participants wore their dresses and ties. Why a dress, you ask? December decided to reclaim and reappropriate the dress as a symbol of valor. Instead of standing as a uniform, it is a flag of the December movement. It symbolizes freedom and dignity for all people. Colleagues, you know how much I've worked to eradicate human trafficking in Los Angeles. It is the fastest-growing criminal industry in the world. According to the International Justice Movement, sex traffickers generate about $150 million a year. Two million children and 70% of women make up the human trafficking victims. They are sold and bought just like products. As I have made it clear, Los Angeles is not immune to this problem. I was moved by Blythe, like myself. She recognized the enormity in this global crisis, and she did something about it. And I want to recognize her and give her an opportunity to speak to us today. Welcome, Blythe.
As I was introduced, I am someone who is passionate about this issue. I started hearing about human trafficking when I was 19 years old, and I felt a sense of personal urgency to do something about this. And, you know, I am not a cop, I'm not a politician, I'm not a lawyer, and so for years I felt helpless, and I felt the sense of passion mixed with powerlessness. And when December grew as a style challenge, I decided to take a leap of faith. I thought, maybe I can use this as a way to raise awareness and money for anti-trafficking organizations. And what's incredible is since 2013, we've raised over $3 million for domestic and international anti-trafficking organizations. We're in the middle of our fifth campaign, and we've already raised close to $500,000 on day five. And what is really amazing to me personally is I created this organization as a way for myself, a pathway for myself to engage in this issue. And what I ended up doing was creating that path for me and for thousands of other people across the world. We have participants on six continents, and we have more and more men joining in by wearing ties and bow ties during the month as well. So consider this your personal invitation to be a part of this movement in some way as an advocate or as a donor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Blythe. We're going to encourage Mr. England to wear a tie for the month of December.
I was going to say, wait a minute. And you started off saying I'm neither a politician or a cop, and we've got two of those here. So anyway, but Joe's wearing a tie, I think.
And he's a cop.
And he's a cop.
Organizations like December and people like Blythe inspire me every single day to make a difference. And it demonstrates that one person can make a difference in the world, that you don't have to have a degree in international law, or that you don't have to work the United Nations. All you need to do is simply care. And she cares about this issue as well as I do, and I was just taken aback by researching her organization online and her advocacy work and the money that she's collected for raising awareness for human trafficking victims. And colleagues, I want to encourage all of you to wear your ties. I know Ms. Rodriguez couldn't be here with us this morning, but wear our dresses and donate to December campaign at December.org and help Blythe raise awareness and money for this important cause. And I want to again thank her for being an advocate and show her true passion for women and children, and let's end human trafficking, not only in Los Angeles, but around the world. Thank you very much, Blythe, and congratulations. We are very, very proud to recognize you and your organization and continue to do the great work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Nuri Blythe, thank you for this. I have a half a suspicion that the strategy was devised in cooperation with Mr. Krikorian, who's always trying to get me to wear a necktie. Not wearing the tie, but I will make a donation. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Bonnet.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, colleagues.
Thank you again. Okay, we'll go ahead and take a number of items up. We'll take, I think we're ready on item one, so we'll go ahead and take item one.
Excuse me, Mr. President. On item one, there are also requests to continue item 1L and 1M for 45 days to January 19th.
Okay, without objection, that'll be in the order. We can take the balance of those items up on item one. We'll go ahead and open the roll on item one.
Hold on, hold on. We're voting now. Okay, we can take up one.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take item one up now. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item, please.
And, Mr. President, on items 43, 44, 46, 48, and 50, the amending motions have been posted, circulated at this point, and are available for consideration.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and consider those now, then we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items.
And 50.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take items six and 36 at this time. I'm sorry, six, we have a, we'd like it to go fourth with, we have a request for fourth with. On item six, we'll go ahead and send that forth with without objection.
Can I hear your request?
Okay, and then on 36, we're going to go ahead and open the roll on an urgent fourth with request. So that's something we've got to vote on. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, that is approved. Let's go ahead and take the cards for 54 now. So Sarah Roos, Eric Roman, Andrea Leon Grossman, followed by Leah Garland. So if y'all want to come on up.
Good morning, council members. Eric Roman, representing the Stand L.A. Coalition, Standing Together Against Neighborhood Drilling. We're here to speak in support of the motion today to investigate the leak on the west side and at the facility in the Rancho Park Golf Course of an odor agent called Mercaptin that thousands of people on the west side of the city smelled. At all stages of the life cycle of oil and gas, from extraction to transport to storage to use, there are inherent dangers, and those dangers are especially intense when those activities are in close proximity to people's homes or schools or to other sensitive land uses, senior centers, hospitals, et cetera. Mercaptins are chemical odor agents that actually mask, that are, in this case, used as a warning to community members that there's a gas leak, but at the same time, the chemicals themselves are inherently dangerous, and we encourage you to look into their use across the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Leon Grossman. I'm a resident of Rancho Park, and on Wednesday night, I got extremely sick, as did my husband and my dog. I know many residents from my community got sick. I didn't even know that there was a Mercaptin plant in my own backyard, and I appreciate Councilmember Corretts looking into the oil field that we already have in our backyard. I did not know this plant was there. We don't need these plants here. I don't know how many other plants we have in our city. We don't need these toxic substances in our city. This was just, my understanding is just one gallon that got spilled. I don't know if there's barrels of this here. If we have an earthquake, we might not be able to breathe. If this is what I live through one day, I want to know what people in nearly, leaving Porter Ranch or other communities withstood. We need this plant to be shut down. We don't need these facilities. We don't need oil drilling in our communities.
Hi, good morning. My name is Dr. Leah Garland, and I just want to say that I have friends in Venice and in Mar Vista who could smell the Mercaptin leak last Wednesday night. I know a lot about Mercaptin because I've interviewed folks from Eight Mile, Alabama regarding their Mercaptin plant. A Mercaptin plant was deliberately built in an area that was designed to be an African-American community. It's a history of eco-racism in Alabama, and I really hope that you talk to people at Eight Mile so they can tell you about the toxicity and what they have experienced in Alabama, so you can take the Mercaptin leak here seriously. Because if you have to move a half a million people because of Mercaptin leak, that's something I don't think LA is prepared to do. I don't think we have emergency plan ready to go. So please, take this very seriously, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Final speaker.
Hi, my name is Sarah Roos. Thank you for listening and paying attention to this situation. There was an odorant leak from the gas in Rancho Park last Wednesday night. I live four miles away in Mar Vista, and my neighbors all around me have reported adverse effects. They're very scared about the lack of sort of clear process for receiving information about what happened. I think that you, council members, have in front of you an actual good option to move forward to deal with this. The planning department, your planning department, has a nuisance abatement program. It's designed specifically to deal with these sorts of grandfathered legacy businesses that are present on Rancho Park. It's a 50-year-old oil exploration field, and it's clearly in close proximity to residents and providing a risk to all of us. Your planning department, if you would please instruct them to initiate a nuisance abatement process. Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. All right, and so, Mr. Corretts, we are on this item. Did you wish to speak or ask for more time?
Yes, I would like to speak. And thank you for hearing this today, and I appreciate you both hearing it and allowing it to be waved out of public safety in the urgency of the moment. I suspect of all of us, you're probably the most sympathetic, having gone through something considerably more lengthy and serious in your district. I'd like to call up to the table our petroleum administrator, representatives from LA Fire Department, from County Health Department, and from SoCal Gas. And first, I want to say this is an issue of great importance to a large number of people in Council District Five and nearby communities who were impacted last Wednesday evening around 9:00 PM, when my deputies began receiving messages about a strong odor in West LA. We received many phone calls and emails from people who were rightly very concerned about what was happening, and with Aliso Canyon fresh in everyone's minds, they were thinking they were facing a similar situation. One woman, who was eight or nine months pregnant, picked up and left to go spend the night somewhere else, and I don't blame her. Other families close to Rancho Park evacuated themselves, which is what the SoCal Gas website suggests when you smell something like this. Fortunately, not everyone did that because we would have had tens of thousands of people trying to evacuate. Unfortunately, that doesn't work with a four-square-mile-or-so cross-section that's highly populated. It also didn't work the next day when Overland Elementary School didn't know what was happening and closed to shut down the school for a day. Even now, nearly a week later, I'm still getting emails from folks saying the smell is still in their cars and their homes, and worse yet, some people are still coughing stuff up. And these were all people who were well before the leak. I've even had some emails from people who have said they felt a little queasy before the leak took place, so I don't know if there was any kind of pre-leak spill, but we want to ask that as well. So I have many questions, but I think the first one is whether, when did the spill actually take place? Was there any kind of a pre-spill leak taking place, or did it all happen on that one evening?
Councilmember Corretts, City Council, thanks to you for having us today. My name's Udo Akjo Intook, City Petroleum Administrator. Yes, this last Wednesday night, there was numerous complaints of odor smell across West LA from residents in the media, and around 9:00 in the evening, the odor has been identified as Mercaptin, which is an additive put into natural gas when it's put into the distribution center or network. In the Rancho Park Golf Course is a drill site, and there is a natural gas that's produced from there and several other sites that go into the SoCal Gas distribution network. And they have an oxidizer permitted by AQMD to Southern California Gas to oxidize that gas so that it will have that smell that people are familiar with if they had a leaking oven or water heater, that people are educated around what the smell of Mercaptin was. There were various reports that evening, and we did get notification through our LA City CUPA, which is in the Fire Department, the Certified Unified Program Agency. We do have Chief Crowley here that can speak in more detail about their experience, and they did have personnel on site. We also have Southern California Gas here that can answer some of the specifics of the question. I've gotten reports, both from Hillcrest Beverly Oil Corp., which is the operator of the drill site adjacent to the oxidizer equipment that was, has been determined to be the source of the leak. And it was not, from our indications presumably, a natural gas leak, but an oxidizer leak that's a very strong odorant, it has a very pungent smell, and is very likely what folks have experienced in the neighborhood. But the investigation is still ongoing, and we're still collecting information. So at this point, I'd like to, maybe the Fire Department, to talk about their response and from their perspective on the incident.
Good morning, council members. My name is Kristen Crowley, and I'm the Deputy Chief and Fire Marshal for--
My name is Kristen Crowley, and I'm the Deputy Chief and Fire Marshal for the Los Angeles Fire Department. I can speak just specifics on the incident, when we were called out. Our Engine 92 was called out. Was unable to find any specific area. They're called up multiple times. We didn't find any immediate hazard or no detection with the type of equipment that we carry on our apparatus. Let me ensure you that if there is a time and place that we do have to evacuate, we do have the capabilities to do that, and we work very closely with our public safety partners, LAPD, as well as your staff, to ensure that there's a plan in place. As for the investigative aspect of it, when we sent out our staff, which comes from our Certified Unified Program Agency, we have professional staff that's trained for that, by the time we sent out our individual to do the investigation, everything was cleaned up from that point, is my understanding. So I don't know if anybody else can speak on the investigation. I know it's ongoing and active, but we'll keep you all posted and report back as necessary.
And we did have, there were notices that went to the Governor's Office of Emergency Services, Cal OES, both that evening, and there was three subsequent updates the following morning from Southern California Gas, specifically stating that it was a pump failure at the odorant tank that caused the material to be released, and then most, any of the liquids that was released was captured in the secondary containment in the notification, but that was kind of our preliminary assessment we got from the Governor's Office when that notification went out, in addition to what emergency notifications went out to the Fire Department. Maybe at this point, SoCal Gas can answer when exactly they were notified and the timing. Please.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Lisa Alexander. I'm Vice President of Customer Solutions for SoCal Gas. I would like to thank you for raising this important issue today and to provide us the opportunity to answer your questions. I'll just start by also thanking Councilmember Corretts, your office, for touring the site to get a better understanding of the configuration on behalf of your constituents who are so concerned. I appreciate the comments from the public as well. We do understand that the odor was intense and can be intense, and we take last week's situation quite seriously. So before I discuss some of the details and answer your question in particular, let me start by saying that SoCal Gas is a local company. We're headquartered here in Los Angeles. Our 8,000 employees, including myself, live and work in the communities that we serve, and safety is our top priority. This is our home as well. Even the west side, we have many employees who live in that area. So specifically, last week, it was on Wednesday evening, we started getting a number of calls complaining about odor. I'd like to note that the time lapse between we start, the time at which we started receiving the calls at around 8:30 or 9:00, and the time at which we stopped the leak was under an hour. So we dispatched dozens of crews, or dozens of employees to investigate the odor complaints we were getting. Usually, when we get odor complaints like that, our first concern is that there could be a gas leak, which is our top priority. So our company responded to assure community safety was utmost of importance during that period. In addition to following up with all the residential customers who called, we also sent a crew to the producer facility, and that's where they determined that the leak was a result of odorant, not natural gas, and they stopped the leak right there on-site. I'll note again that this was not a gas leak, and I think everyone's been clear about that. It was an isolated leak of the odorant that is used to scent the gas that is done out of an abundance of caution for customer safety. And in many cases, the odorant used in the gas has saved lives as people use natural gas to heat their homes. Over 90% of Californians do use it. So I'd like to be specific about communications, and I understand that that is a real source of much concern.
Let me ask you to clarify one thing first. So was it not the, the actual oil company, Hillcrest, that notified Southern California Gas that this was taking place?
We had a number of calls. So we had near over 700 calls from the community with generalized concerns about odor. And as we say on our website and in as many venues as we can, when you smell gas, call us immediately, because we're concerned that that's a gas leak. Concurrently, the producer facility also called us to say that they thought the odorant was leaking. So we were handling the hundreds of customer concerns because we needed to be certain that those weren't concerns related to a gas leak at the residential homes. And then in parallel, we got the call from the producer about the odorant at their facility.
And a question about communication, which you can answer as you, you provide the information that you are going to provide. We have gotten a number of reports from residents that they, and, and I'd ask the Fire Department to tell us what, what they were told initially as well, but residents were told by your people, it's a leak in Culver City, it's a leak in Santa Monica, it's something going on in Beverly Hills, after you already knew and were addressing and then had addressed what was going on there. So it's a kind of bizarre and inexplicable situation. Why, why would your people, who I assume must have been told the right answer, be providing wrong information all over the place, including possibly to the Fire Department? Because when we initially heard from the Fire Department, they told us it was in Culver City, and they had heard that from you. So how, how can you explain all of that?
Yeah, and, and I think the confusion's understandable. Thank you for that question. So as I said earlier, in the early stages, our primary concern in a situation like this is customer safety. So we were laser-focused on going through those 700 orders and going on-site to each and every one of those customers to assure that there was no gas leak situation. It took some time for us to confirm that the source of the smell of the odor was specific to and uniquely to that production facility. It would have not been prudent for us to have dismissed the 700 odors that we got and neutralized those as the reason and point only to the odorant. So it was on us to make sure that there wasn't anything going on beyond that odorant leak at the, at the producer facility. I do acknowledge that as we were trying to do our best to provide updated information, that the information was coming in in real time. So that is where the source of some of the confusion came, distinguishing where the odor complaints were coming from versus where the producer facility was. I'll note that I think as a result of this, we have identified, and thank you very much to your office and your leadership for helping us think even more proactively about how we can get a handle on, on coming out with accurate information in a more timely way to help balance, that can, or help mitigate confusion going forward. One thing I think that we can do better, and we, we learn every, every opportunity that we can, is to utilize local social media more than we have, particularly where these things happen after hours, when we can't rely on traditional media sources. There's also an opportunity for us to do better in communicating to local elected officials whose constituents are impacted, as well as others who have a vested interest in, in the safety of the community. I'll note that we did communicate within about three hours of, of the incident beginning with Cal OES, L.A. City Fire as part of the CUPA, and the South Coast Air Quality Management District. So that communication did happen that evening.
Well, it, it was good that the right information was provided around midnight or so, but when you had the leak at around 9:00, if we had actually quickly tried to reach the media, we could have had it on the 10:00 news, 11:00 news, and let people know, it's not a gas leak, it's not an ongoing problem, but it is a spill of a chemical, and it'll take at least a few hours to begin to dissipate. I think the, the possible result of not doing that, although it didn't turn out that way, could have been large numbers of people deciding that they had to evacuate, which could have been more disastrous considerably than the incident itself, as we've seen in the terrible fire that's going on, at least one person died from an accident trying to evacuate. So we could have reduced the amount of panic and let people know what was going on. It still would have been unpleasant, because I guess we had a marine layer, so it was slow to dissipate.
I do appreciate that feedback, and I'd like to share with you that next week, we do have a meeting with the Petroleum Administrator, L.A. Fire, and the CUPA to discuss in more detail how we can work together and partner to get information out in situations like this going forward.
And even, I have to admit, even my office wasn't perfect in getting information out to our constituents, but it was kind of a difficult call, because we were getting information that it was everywhere, from Culver City to Santa Monica to Beverly Hills, everywhere except where it was in my district. So even when we got the right information at midnight, we weren't really sure whether it was the right information or just another misdirection. So it, it's kind of a hard call. And then, do you panic people and send it out on social media one in the morning when you've really figured it out? Or do you just let the chemical dissipate? And that was, that was kind of the decision we made, and I'm still not sure whether it was a right one or a wrong one, but I think we need an emergency plan that includes the council offices, and, and we all should be in a better position should something like this ever happen again.
I appreciate the input. Thank you. I'd also like to make a note on what's coming next as we take a look at the site, but before I dive into that, I, I wanted to see if, if you'd like anyone else to further comment on, on your earlier question.
Well, I, I do have a question for the Fire Department about what they initially heard from the gas company and whether it was communicated as a certain fact or a guess or how that, how that came to you.
My understanding is with the initial response, it was an odor, an undetectable odor. So the issues that we were having, probably was very similar to your office, was the information that was getting disseminated wasn't specific enough, even from the location of sending our apparatus out to kind of conduct a windshield survey to try to identify what and where and what was actually happening and occurring. We didn't get that information quickly enough, because I don't think they had the ability to identify it quickly. So we had a number of our engines moving around within that area, but were unable to detect what it was, so the information that was disseminated was not specific enough and quick enough, quickly enough identified, so that we just had, that was the issue on our end.
And also to follow up on the hundreds of calls you were getting, a lot of people have, have written to me that they never got a response. Now, you may have gone out to, to check it out, but not communicated with them. I also don't know if they would have necessarily wanted a communication at 3:00 in the morning or, or not, but not entirely clear. So one of the suggestions was that you put on your line some sort of recorded message that gave the information, so at least people that didn't want to wait half an hour, however long it took when, when your lines were overwhelmed, that initially, they at least could get that information. And I presume it was because of the quantity that you went out and checked out a lot of these locations, but people were not happy that they weren't communicated back with. So I don't know how much of that you were able to do.
You know, we have an obligation to respond to concerns of gas leaks within a very specific period of time in a very specific way, so I, I can't comment on some of, some of the cases that you're citing, but I can say that, that generally, we, we, overall, we are committed to arriving at every gas leak complaint within the appropriate period of time, and the customer knows when we do that. So I'm happy to take back, though, and as part of our debrief, look to see how we responded to these hundreds of complaints.
And I wonder how much you can tell us about the specific chemical that's, that's used in the odorant, because I know it's obviously highly concentrated, and I, I've heard different periods of time, but apparently, somewhere between every few seconds and a couple minutes, a drop of this stuff is added to the flow of gas, and that's enough to allow you to smell it in your home if there's a leak, et cetera. So how, how powerful and how toxic is this stuff? Obviously, if you drink it, I'm sure it's, it's pretty deadly. I'm sure if, if an entire, the entire quantity that was spilled went into the air, it would be more deadly, but just how toxic is it in the, the amounts that, that were, were released? And do we have any idea how much was released? And has anyone studied this level of release to know how dangerous it was to the people that were nearby?
Thank you for the question. So we have distributed the safety data sheet that talks about the attributes of the odorant to your office and possibly to all the council members. I can't say for sure whether we've done that, but we'd be happy to give that to you if, if you are interested.
But the key, the key is the quantity.
Yeah.
And, and the concentration, and how that impacts as opposed to just the, the general amount that you have in natural gas, which everyone seems to agree is pretty safe.
Right. So, so the odorant that spilled, it was about one to two gallons, and it spilled from the pump area into a secondary containment area that, that is designed for that sort of situation. So at no time did that odorant leak pose a hazard, a hazard to the community, either the, the immediate community or the communities to which the, the odorant flowed through the air.
But has, has this level of release been studied, and what was the specific result, if it was?
I don't have information on that, but I can share that this kind of process by which gas is odorized at the point at which producer injects into our system is a common industry practice. It's one that's designed with an eye towards safety and preventing many fatalities. And while I don't, I'm not aware of any study about a situation where tons of the odorant has, has leaked, I can assure you that in this particular situation, there was no hazard to the public.
Well, I'd like some follow-up from, from somewhere through, through the Petroleum Administrator on a study of, of what the impact is at this level. I mean, obviously, we've had other situations that aren't exactly on point, like Aliso Canyon, because obviously, that was a, a smaller amount, but over an incredibly lengthy period of time, so you have a completely different issue. Here, you have a much higher concentration, but just over a short period of time. So I'd like to see a little more study on, on that, to see what the actual impacts are. Perhaps more importantly, how much of this is the result of an aging infrastructure? And, you know, how?
Mr. Corretts, I want to, I want to be mindful. We're 20 minutes over the allotted time, but this is too important, and I wanted to make sure that your issues and concerns are addressed. I'll tell you right now, from your questions and the answers we've gotten, if I could, mine aren't, but you may have some recommendations. We don't have to note and file this. There could be recommendations you may wish to make at this point for additional studies or emergency plans or communication protocols to come back. And, and Mr. Bonin has questions, and I believe so does Councilmember Harris Thompson. So we have a number of members on the queue as well. So why don't we come back to you? Why don't you think about that for a moment?
So I'm, I'm fine to press my button again.
Great.
And ask a few more questions, but let my colleagues do that.
Appreciate that. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Mr. Corretts, for bringing in this motion. As we heard from public testimony today, while this incident occurred in your district, it was certainly noticed and felt in, in my district. I could smell it at my home in Mar Vista. I got reports from constituents throughout Mar Vista. home in Mar Vista. I got reports from constituents throughout Mar Vista, even as far away in Venice, that, that there was a scent. I'm not satisfied or placated by what I've heard, so I'm very eager for the Petroleum Administrator's report. Nor frankly, am I placated by the fact that, that the use of this may be the industry standard. The industry standard works for industries until they no longer work for the public, and then the industry standards often change, particularly in the fossil fuel industry. I've, just, just sitting here Googling, I've noticed that, that, is there a difference between methyl mercaptan and, and mercaptan?
There are different types of mercaptan.
Okay.
I can share that, that we use a different type of mercaptan here than the type that has been cited in a number of other incidents. I don't have the detail beyond that, but we have shared the data sheet. I'll be happy to get that to you so you can see the specific type that was used in this incident.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that. The, the report I'm, I'm most interested in is going to be from, from city staff. No, no offense. It's just, it's an independent agency, not the industry itself. I mean, I've seen reports that some types of mercaptan cause irritation of the eyes, nose, and throat, shortness of breath, coughing, wheezing, tearing of eyes, can cause nausea, vomiting, and dizziness. There was an incident where it was certainly much more than was released here, where at a DuPont plant in Houston in 2014, four people were killed and, and one was injured. Again, a big difference from what we understand from, from a gallon or two, but we don't know exactly what was released, and I think we, we need to get much more information about that, including any history of, of similar incidents elsewhere, incidents of any sort with this facility, and any independent government or, you know, CDC, or other state government studies on the, the impacts of, of mercaptan. I think that's important for us to, to, to get to know that. I think the, the public is sort of, at least my constituency, like Mr. Coretz's, is sort of demanding of, of more information. I'd also like to ask Udoak, in your report back, if you could address the concern that was raised by Ms. Rouse from the Mar Vista Community Council about whether there is any ability. You'd need to confer with planning and city attorney about whether the city should have a standard of nuisance abatement for facilities, not specifically this one, but more generally speaking. And then, my final question is for the, the Fire Department. This happened at 9:00 at night. I have a constituent who lives in Mar Vista. He happens to be a strong environmentalist, used to work in government here, works for NRDC, and he woke up, he smelled that he was concerned for his family. He asked some questions and was told, "Well, if, if there's a serious problem, the cops will come knocking on your door and will tell you to evacuate." He didn't find that particularly comforting because he thought, "This is a very wide area. We don't have all that many free cops to, to do this." So, he wound up checking into a hotel somewhere else, out of an abundance of caution. What really is our process? If this had been something we needed to evacuate people for, what would we have done?
You know, our, our current plan is somewhat similar to that of how we're approaching our brush fires in regard to evacuation. A lot of similarities and parallels there, where we unify, we have unified command. The big issue is to put that footprint around the incident, and that I think was, what I'm hearing here was the issue. We didn't know where it was coming from, what was involved, that sort of a thing. But, from the Fire Department's perspective, once we would have that information, we unify with LAPD, we would handle that situation and that incident as a hazmat situation, and would evacuate accordingly, even putting into the weather, the wind, all of that. We have computer models that we would utilize. But, that small piece of, "Well, we're going to have a police officer knock on your doors," one component. But, once we unify with LAPD, we would have additional resources ordered up, and then we'd do that evacuation in that area specific that would be negatively impacted.
Do we do reverse 911 or text alert?
We do have the ability to do that in a major disaster, yes.
And, and folks can sign up for text alerts as they, they, they would for, for any emergency response?
Right. Through NotifyLA, that's, that's the, probably the easiest way to utilize the technology.
Would that have been used in this case?
It depends on the scope of the incident, is my understanding. But, we could report back with the specifics of what the capabilities are for evacuation, and then parallel that of, off the brush fires, but specifically report back as to hazardous materials incident, and how we would handle that situation.
So, my, my last question is sort of the reverse of the one I just asked. There was significant concern. Some folks, like the constituent I referred to, decided out of an abundance of caution to check into a, a hotel. If there is a scent and there is a concern, do we ever communicate with people saying, "It's okay, stay in place"? Because absent hearing something that says affirmatively, "You should stay," a lot of folks in a situation like this are going to get the hell out of there.
Right. Understood. That is our intention. We want to make sure that we are notifying the public early and often. Again, it matters on the scope of the incident. In this case, same parallels with brush fires as well. We may have mandatory evacuation similar to brush fires, same thing with hazardous materials incident. Now, it's a matter of what the comfort level of the individuals and constituents in the public are willing to either leave their home because they feel it's unsafe, or they wait for that evacuation order to vacate their property. And it's, it's a matter of communicating, they said, either through reverse 911, or through our Public Information Office, that we would push the social media piece out. That's our, our current plan, but I, we could bring somebody back who's more versed in what our actual steps that we take within the department are.
Thank you. And for the Petroleum Administrator, as I sit down, Mr. Chairman, today we're discussing mercaptan. I imagine that there are other additives. I think it would behoove us as a body to know the, the same answers to questions about other additives as we do to mercaptan about potential health impacts. At what point is an exposure a problem? At what point do we need to alert people, just so that we don't need to do this if there's a similar incident with something else?
And I might add, this is a, a good reminder to the public. They should always call 911 when they smell something or think there's an emergency or concern, because that gives us data as a city to know that the various places. It's good to call the, the news or call the company, but calling 911, and it's going to connect us to, to the city, and we're going to have more information, is important. Also, in any odor or smell, they should also call AQMD at 1-800-CUT-SMOG. They also have a line and will have information immediately available for the public if they're either want to notify that they're, they're smelling something, or if other smells or other complaints are in the area. So, those are two important phone numbers, and we are working on enhancing our reverse 911 system right now. There's a state law that just passed where we're actually going to be able to get more funding to enhance and beef up our system to do geo-fencing to send out notifications, both on home phones and mobile phones in a specific area if there's an incident, whether it's a shelter-in-place notice or an evacuation notice. We have that flexibility to make those, those, and we're, we're working on enhancements. And we ironically had a emergency notification meeting planned for next week because of the previous natural gas explosion at Hyde Park that was in CD8 earlier this fall. And so, we're, we're continuing to try to enhance our, our communications with SoCal Gas and our, and our public safety officials.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Coretz, for bringing these folks here today to talk about this particular incident. I'm particularly grateful for, to you, for it. We had an incident back in, around Labor Day of this year where a street fully exploded, 250-pound manhole covers flew into the air. And we had a series of discussions not dissimilar to the ones that you described with your staff. I wanted to know if we've made any improvement since that time in how we, one, arrive at a narrative about what happened? Because in our situation, there was a 72 hours or more where the gas companies insisted that there was no leak until they stopped insisting that there was no leak. And so, one, do we have a way of knowing what the narrative is? Two, getting the information out? And then, specifically to the Fire Department, what's the exact protocol for when you all start an investigation? Because in this case, it felt like we had to say, "We're not getting answers from DWP or the gas company. We need you all to step in." And it's, it's extremely troubling when you have something like that happen, and the experts can't even, you know, everybody kind of says, "Well, it wasn't us," which is not helpful at all to folks who are trying to get back in their houses and live in their daily lives. So, again, Mr. Coretz, I'd join you in any motion or, or action to help give transparency to our reporting process, but also to clarify, again, how we arrive at a narrative, what people are actually told, and when.
I'd like to now turn it over to Councilmember Buscana.
Thank you.
And, and, and I'm, I'm doing so with respect to Mr. Harris-Dawson because there were questions you actually asked. I just didn't feel, as a chair, and if you want them answered, we can pause for that, but I don't think that SoCal Gas is in a position to, from my opinion, answer those accurately. So, I want to come back to that. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So, appreciate the presentation, and of course, in CD15, we're no stranger to these types of incidents, and I, we have a great working relationship with the Fire Department. We are heavily surrounded by heavy industry, industrial areas, rather, and also our, our refineries in and around the Wilmington community. And just this last week, last Friday, the AQMD moved forward on a fence line monitoring program that will now require fence line monitoring at all of our refineries. My question, Udoak, if you can answer, here in the city, and to take a step further to Mr. Harris-Dawson's question is, you know, we owe it to our residents in this city to be more, more open on the data, and even more so, knowing that there's technology today with a simple app. You can monitor exactly what's taking place at these drill sites. Do we have a citywide fence line monitoring program at these, at these drill sites? Because if we don't, we ought to require one citywide. So, this is an open and transparent process to indeed, if, you know, something like this occurs, residents can download the app and can monitor exactly what's going on. Because I do know that the gas company, they do have a fence line monitoring on methane. Is something that we can look into?
It's definitely something we can look to. It's an emerging technology, and the price has come down substantially in the last 10 years. And it's now that AQMD has done refineries.
Yeah.
They're looking at production sites next year as a next step of that tool. And the continuous fence line monitoring is really important because it gives us data that we can all agree on and look, is there a spike? Was there nothing? It's, it's good information. We do have two incidences in the city where there's fence line monitoring. One is part of the court order injunction. An Allen Co. is required to have fence line monitoring. Also, the recent zoning hearing at the Jefferson Drill Site put that as a new condition of operating, but we do not have a citywide ordinance or policy-
So, again, I, I think we shouldn't have to wait for a court injunction or an incident. You heard, let's be more proactive. I'd like to hear back the feasibility of launching a citywide fence line monitoring program at these drill sites. Thank you.
Mr. Coretz?
Yeah. Just a couple of further questions. So, I don't think we ever got an answer to what actually caused the spill. Why, why did all of this happen, and how, how do we prevent it in the future?
What, the cause? Well, my, my understanding in speaking with the staff at Hillcrest Beverly Oil Corp., they smelled the leak approximately 8:45, witnessed fluid coming out of the tank and leaking down, and reported that to SoCal Gas. And that was in an enclosure on the site that's only accessible by SoCal Gas. In the OES notification, it had that the pump failed. And, and in talking to the staff on site, apparently there was some maintenance work done earlier on Wednesday, this past Wednesday, that may have been a cause of why it leaked. But, we have not got any information from Southern California Gas, if, if it was the pump, or was a seal, or what the exact cause, nor do we have access to the information. And my understanding, some of the equipment is now being removed, and I do not know the status of that or why it's been removed from the site.
And I can, I can provide an update on that. So, to carry on, we are investigating the cause of the spill, but we do suspect that it was an equipment failure on the pump system, as the Petroleum Administrator noted. So, to help prevent this from happening again, we are going to be replacing the pump system. That will take approximately two months to get the equipment, and then perhaps more time to install it. During that period, the system will not be operational, obviously. I'd like to note that as part of our work to confirm that that's the cause and to further assess it, we will be working on the equipment starting tomorrow. We hope that as we go forth in that process, that that will provide added assurance to you and others about the, what happened, and how we can prevent things like that from happening going forward. In the spirit of the communications, I'd like to note that using this forum, we've also sent a number of emails to key stakeholders this morning, giving advance notice that this work is going to occur. And we are also using targeted social media to let the surrounding communities who were impacted last Wednesday be apprised that we are taking this work going, we are starting this work going forward. So, it's scheduled to take place between 8:00 and 4:00 tomorrow, and we're taking precautions to mitigate odors that, that could result from that work.
So, if you shut down the equipment, there's a few possibilities. One, unlikely that the oil company is shutting down their operation for two months. So, I presume the gas byproduct is still being produced. So, it would either be going into your system without an odorant, which I assume is unsafe to do, or they'd have to do something else like flare it into the air. Do we know what the plan is?
Yeah. I can't speculate on the producers' plans at this point. I can note that it must be odorized before it goes into our system for safety.
So, I, I think we have some folks from the company here. I wonder if someone could answer what, what happens to the natural gas during this period?
Hi, Councilmember Coretz. Thanks for the question. The-
And you can state your name for the reference?
Ted Cordova, Representative to HBOC. The, the site would be shut down until the equipment is back up and running.
Oh, that's, that's very good. Thank you. That's a good practice. So, a couple things that I would recommend at a minimum. Well, one is a question. So, if this has happened, and it presumably could happen again, although hopefully less likely with brand-new equipment, what caused the, the, the gas to wind up, or the chemical to wind up being expelled into the air? Is this an outdoor facility? And is that why it had the opportunity? Because I'm wondering, I don't know the size of the equipment, but whether there could be some sort of an enclosure that would trap the chemicals should this happen, so that even though it, it did go through a couple fail-safe processes, and so it was never spilled into the ground, it did wind up getting into the air. So, is there some way to enclose that to make that unlikely or an impossibility?
I think it's a good suggestion, or it's an interesting suggestion, that as we do the investigation to confirm that it was the pump or, or something else, we will also be sure to look at mitigations should something like this happen again. I, I, to, to build on your question, though, I, I want to be clear that the secondary containment is like a concrete basin that is exposed to the air. So, your suggestion is an interesting one, and I'm pleased to take that back to our operations team.
So, so the, the motions that I would make, one would be to have SoCal Gas and our Petroleum Administrator come back with a report on the feasibility of a, a- to this chemical. Second, and I think Mr. Harris-Dawson and I were clearly thinking in the same direction, that we require a communication plan and an emergency plan, and that we have the emergency management department, LAPD, LAFD, DWP, SoCal Gas, and sanitation department all work together on providing that. And third, I'd ask that we ask SoCal Gas to do a serious inventory of all their equipment present in the city of Los Angeles, and assess its condition, and be required to fix anything that needs to be updated. And that we make this a condition of the renewal of the franchise agreement going forward, and ask that our petroleum administrator supervise that as well. So I would make those three motions. I believe that Mr. Harris-Dawson would like to be a co-presenter of the communications and emergency plan element of that, and Mr. Bonin. And I would ask for a second to that motion. Well, you can't second it because you're on it, but Mr. Blumenfield would be the second on all three of those motions.
Okay. So those are all motions to report back on?
Yes.
Okay. Including the conditioning of... So those are all motions to report back on. So we'll go ahead and we'll vote on that in a moment.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a second. We're good. And Joe could second it, actually. It doesn't matter if he's on the original motion or not, but...
Fence line monitoring.
And fence line monitoring. Okay. All right. When the conversation started to gear towards the communications plan and the responses, this is shockingly similar to the very questions that I've been asking for two years. So with SoCal Gas, let me ask you a question. Did anybody there actually pick up the phone on that day? That day, that the complaints were getting and coming in? And notify the council offices directly on that day of where the complaints were coming from?
As I noted earlier, we notified all appropriate reporting agencies...
That's a ridiculous answer. That is... Excuse me. No.
You didn't let me finish the answer.
Yeah, because you already said it earlier. And I already asked the council offices. They didn't call. They called the next day.
That's accurate.
They didn't call. And that's just wrong. It's actually really pathetic and angering that we're here again, and you'll be back again, or somebody else representing the company, saying, yeah, no, we notified everybody that we were required to. Sometimes we have to do much more than we're required to do. We've got to do the right thing. And the wrong thing is to not get on the phone and call the appropriate, not just the required, entities. And those include the first point of contact of who getting most of the complaints, and people are panicked.
I hear your frustration.
Well, I don't think you do.
And we can do better.
I don't think you do. I don't think you can do better. I think it's a matter of, I think you failed miserably. It's not just a matter of you can do better. It's a sad state that representatives from your company have said to me that this would never, ever happen again. That if there was ever any leak or blowout, council offices would be in part, and are part of, the emergency plan, which never existed before in terms of a communication plan, and one of the first calls that goes out as well. And again, it didn't happen. And in fact, twice, since the blowout in Porter Ranch. I don't know what it's going to take, quite frankly, to have some corporate responsibility and have a process in place where somebody actually just picks up a phone. I don't think it's that complicated. Maybe we have to mandate training as part of the franchise agreement on how they dial a phone number, because clearly, they're not getting it. And it's frustrating. So here it loud and clear, I really don't want to see you guys back here saying, yes, we could have done a better job of picking up the phone and calling somebody. Not just the required state agency, who also lacks coordination and communication with local jurisdictions. Because I think the frustration is the lack of information, the lack of communication, the lack of responsibility, and the lack of ownership in when these things happen. And mark my words, it's not a matter of if the next leak happens, it's when. The infrastructure's getting older. We're going to have issues. There's constantly spills. We had an issue just last week in Porter Ranch. Again, minor, quickly fixed, but no phone call to my office at all. None. So to sit here and say at all that we take ownership and we take it very seriously is a crock, because you don't. And I think we're all really tired of it. And it's getting to the point where, I'll tell you, things have to change. So get the message back to your stakeholders and all the folks at SoCal, that they have to change, period. Because it would be my intention that if you don't, there's going to be a lot more people very, very angry beyond just the city council here in Los Angeles. And hopefully, the state regulators are listening as well, because I think they have also really done a poor job in a self-regulated industry. So that's my two cents. Let's go ahead and vote on this now. Mr. Coretts, did you want to speak again?
I just wanted to reinforce that point. And in particular, if there's any question of who to call, Southern California Gas is actually working closely with my chief deputy of public safety on an issue that we were trying to help them with through their bureaucracy. So they know exactly who to call, and they know that he has told them and everyone else in the community, call me 24/7, and I will respond. So they know who to call. They had his number. They were just working with him on another issue, and yet, we did never hear from him.
Yeah, I'm not surprised. But I'll tell you, the franchise is going to be a very interesting conversation, and I think in great jeopardy unless they start cleaning up the organization. With that, colleagues, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, we're going to go ahead and reconsider 1G. We'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
And we're going to go ahead and continue 1G to January 9th. Okay, without objection. 19th, I'm sorry, 19th. Without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, Madam Clerk, where does that take us? An item 38? Mr. Bonin, sorry. Yes?
Yes, so Mr. Rue, Mr. Buscagno, and I conferred and seemed to have worked everything out. So for item 38, what we'll do is add a second, add an amendment adding a second item, which is upon city council approval of dockless bike share regulations, authorize the Los Angeles Department of Transportation to develop and execute an agreement for dockless bike share in CD4 immediately. We will be doing this in committee next week, and then we'll be able to move on CD4 and CD3 and 13, and the other ones interested in doing this.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. Okay. And so with that, that was just, is that a technical amendment? Or just a clarification?
Technical amendment.
Technical amendment. Okay. So that technical amendment, seconded by Rue, and it's not significant. We'll go ahead and open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Okay. And that's going back to committee?
I'm sorry, correction. 12 eyes.
Okay. Okay.
President, I could ask for item 6 to go forth with.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. I think we actually did that already. Yeah, we did. 6 was meant, sent forth with. We'll send it forth with a second time? All right. Yeah, no. Double forth with. All right. That's anyone's share. Okay. Madam Clerk, where does that take us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, those are posted and referred. Thank you very much.
That clears the desk.
That clears the desk. Councilmembers, do we have any announcements? Seeing none. Do we have any adjourning motions? Looking to my left, do we have adjourning motions? Excuse me, you're yelling out. You're disrupting this meeting. You're going to be asked to leave. Sergeants, can you please escort Mr. Herman out? Please escort him out. Hold on a sec. Please escort him out. Thank you very much.
By the way, just for the record, we took general public comment and closed it when Mr. Herman was not here.
You're out of here. Thank you very much. Still yelling out.
And he's yelling out.
He's still yelling out.
And continuing to...
Still yelling out.
And he's disrupting our meeting as he's escorted out.
He's not just disrupting the meeting, he's yelling racial slurs in a very threatening, aggressive, combative manner as well. So let the record show that that's beyond disruption and threatening to the general You can please ask the sergeant if you've got a question, ma'am. Okay, so we're going to go ahead. Please rise for adjourning motions. Excuse me, ma'am. If you filled out a card after we already took the public comment on an item, your card would be noted that you filled it out. But we already did. So you can talk to the sergeant on the side. Thank you very much. If we can get everybody in chambers to please rise for adjourning motions? Thank you. Please rise for adjourning motions. Councilmember Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. A beloved member of our Harbor Gateway community, passed away, and I'd like to honor her and adjourn in her memory today. Neodros Bridgeforth, known as Dee by her family and friends. Born January 23rd, 1929, in Jefferson, Arkansas, the eighth of 10 children. Attended high school for one semester in Berkeley. She would go on to complete college at LA City College and satisfy the requirements to enter the USC School of Pharmacy. Also worked part-time through college and make ends meet. Mary David Bridgeworth on July 21st, 1951. Became the second African-American woman to graduate from pharmacy school at USC in 1952. She was very active in our local community, serving as an officer on the Harbor Gateway North neighborhood council. Passed away on October 13th, 2017. Leaves to cherish her loving memory, her son Ronald Bridgeworth, her daughter Constance, two grandsons, and many nephews and nieces. She will truly be missed. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more adjourning motions on my left, none on my right. Okay, councilmembers, thank you. We are adjourned. Be safe.